Thank you for joining us for a very important IEA reporter interview. I'm Dave Harbison, the Communications Director of the Idaho Education Association, and I'm pleased to be joined by the President of the Idaho State Board of Education Kurt Leibich, who assumed that role in April of this year. Kurt, I do want to delve into your background and kind of some of your long range vision for Idaho Public Schools. But let's start by taking a look at some of the extremely significant and difficult and unfortunately, many, in many cases contentious issues that you and the state board have had to deal with recently. The top of that list, not surprisingly, is the impact of COVID-19 and its Delta variant that have had on our public education system. So what has your approach been to date? And how might that change as we deal with things like unfortunately, death and illness among our professional educators and school closures and a healthcare system that's being overwhelmed?
Yeah, terrific question. You know, if you go back, this is basically the third academic year we've been dealing with COVID, right? Our schools were shut down in March of 2020. We went through the entire 2021 school year, having to deal with a pandemic. And now here we are in the fall of 21, 22 school year, dealing with the same thing. And, you know, last spring, if you'd asked me where we'd be this fall, I thought we'd pretty much be through it. You know, if you go back to March, April, we were seeing declining COVID rates. And I thought when we came back into school, things would look a lot more normal and we'd be focused on all the academic impacts of the pandemic and not necessarily the continued impacts on the health and safety of our staff and students and communities. So, you know, I think we were all, I don't want to say shocked because we did see it coming by the middle of the summer. But there's no question, the Delta variant has had a really significant impact on our schools, not just K-12, but our higher ed institutions as well, here after, you know, 30, 45 days in the building. You know, our approach really hasn't changed. We've always been a local control state, meaning that our belief is that the best decisions are made by local school boards in local communities. And that's really, that perspective is really driven by the fact that we have such diverse communities. I mean, it's very different. The impact of the pandemic in Boise or West State are very different than what you may see in a salmon or bratkooski. And so, you know, recognizing the differential impacts of the pandemic, we really feel like the best decisions are made at the local school board level. And so our approach has been, let's just make sure our school board leaders and superintendents have the best information they need to make the decisions that are best interest of their communities and but really trust our, our school boards to make those, those local decisions.
It seemed like early on in the decision-making process, though, while that local control was still very much in place, the state board or the executive branch was providing sideboards or fairly strong or significant guidance. And now it seems to have been pushed completely down to the, to the local, to the local district level. What are the pros and cons of that?
Well, I think if you go look, let's go back and watch the progression of this pandemic. In March of 2020, when we knew nothing about this disease, and our only choice was really to shut everything down. And so we shut school, everything down. And then, but again, that wasn't a top-down decision. If you recall back in March of 2020, Blaine County was the first school board to shut schools. And within two weeks, every school board, without any impetus or with any direction from the state board or the governor, had closed schools. So those were local decisions. You know, as we got into the 2021 school year and we began to learn more about the pandemic, we saw a lot of differential approaches, again, because we were still learning. So, you know, you had big districts with high density like Boise when we started the 2020 school year, you know, starting virtually to see what happened. And then you had some districts that's more rural districts started in person. And, you know, through the course of the 2021 school year, we learned from each other based on what was happening in other districts. And by, you know, the end of the school year, we had pretty much, I think we had every school back in person full time. But, you know, through all that, we were learning, we were learning what worked. We were learning that you needed to have social, you needed to have mitigation protocols in place. You needed to have social distancing, you needed to have masks where you couldn't social distance. Those were all the things that got kids back in school in the 2021 school year. And then obviously, the big change coming into this year is that we have vaccines, right? So, you know, again, when you started last year, we had no vaccines, so it all had to be mitigation. Now coming into this year, we, you know, vaccines started to become available early next year, early this year. I thought the governor was very smart to prioritize K-12 educators, sort of to get in the front of the line around that. But I think the big difference coming into this year was the fact that we don't have a cure, but we had, the vaccine is the most powerful thing we can do to stop the spread and to gain control.
It is, I would agree with that if, if there is sufficient buy-in regarding the vaccine and the number of people that get it to make it effective across a broad swath. So I guess the next question would be, have we already missed our best opportunity to turn the corner on COVID and get back to normal operations in school and everywhere else because of the resistance to vaccines and to safety protocols and those kinds of things?
Well, yeah, I think that, I think we really missed it. If we had a huge uptake in the vaccination rates coming into this school year, we wouldn't be dealing with these issues. And we wouldn't be dealing with the conditions in our hospitals right now. So there's no question, the lack or unwillingness of our population here in Idaho to get vaccinated is certainly complicated getting through this pandemic. And I think it's, we've missed the opportunity here with the Delta wave. I do think, and time will tell, I do think we're going to come through this Delta wave in the next 30 to 45 days and probably can start seeing, you know, significant decreases in infection rates and getting, and we'll get our healthcare facilities back to manageable levels. And then the question for our community is going to be, you know, what else do we do to prevent the next wave? With each passing wave, there's more herd immunity, right? Because more people have been infected, but really, we just need to get our vaccination rates up. But, yeah, there's no question.
Yeah, but you can only control, to the degree that you can, even then, what happens in schools. So how do you, as a state board, balance the need to protect the health of students and staff with the knowledge that, you know, that in-person instruction really is highly preferred by pretty much everyone involved?
Yeah, without question. And that's the balancing act we walk. I mean, you can appreciate, in the political climate we're in, it's just not feasible. And frankly, I don't think it's legal with what the state's done for us to mandate vaccinations in our public school. I don't, I don't think that's a, it's not, it's not a possible course of action, I think legally, but certainly not politically. You know, we just, I think we just have to decide what we're solving for here, every school board. If we're solving for maximizing the probability that kids are in school, then you should be doing everything you can to get your vax rates up and putting every mitigation you can put in place. Mask, social distancing, if that's what you're solving for. If you're, if you're solving for political harmony and not, and uncontentious board meetings, then you probably are going to come up with a different answer, but it's not going to be the one that gives you the greatest probability to have kids at school. And that's not an opinion, that's just, that's just based on what we've, we've been at this for the third academic year. We know what works and it's just a question of what, and school boards knows what work. It's simply a question of what, what problem are you trying to solve?
So you know this as well as anyone, we're dealing with over 100 school districts and charters that are public charters. And every one of them has taken a different approach, and that's somewhat by design, to safety protocols, to the use of federal funds for things like educator sick leave and a number of other issues. So who is making the decisions in those school board situations? Do they have all the information and expertise they need to make good decisions?
I hope so. I mean, what, look, we've not, what we've tried to do is just encourage the free flow of information and encourage our school boards to seek out the expert opinions they're going to need to be able to make those decisions. So as an example, when it came to the emergence of the Delta variant, you know, we saw models at the state board level, we saw models about what was going to happen in this state as early as late July, early August. And so we're not surprised at all by what has transpired. And but our approach was, look, let's get the superintendents on the line and let's show them the models. Let's make them aware of this wave that's coming at them. Let's make sure, let's, within the last, again, this is a third academic year. If a school board doesn't have a relationship with a local medical provider in their local area to understand what's happening on the ground in their medical facilities, then they're missing the boat. But to me, if you're a school board member and you're, and you're trying to make these decisions and you're listening to the healthcare providers, you're understanding the capacity situation in your hospitals, if you're, if you're, if you're understanding, if you're watching the state data and you're seeing what's happening with infection rates in your community, if you, if you have all that data and then you sit there, and then I think you have to simply say, what problem am I trying to solve? And if you have all that data and you're, again, you're trying to solve the problem up, I want to maximize my probability to be in school, you're going to make one set of decisions. If you're going to say, I'm going to try to minimize community strife and, and not do some of these things, that's a decision you make. But, but those decisions have to be made at the local community level. Every, you know, our school board members are our neighbors, there are friends in many cases. They, you know, there are, hopefully, everyone in a community is trying to make the decisions in the best interest of the community. And that's where it needs to happen, not, not from a state board, not from a state board mandate. Now, there are things we can do to help school districts. You know, we, and we've done it throughout the pandemic. I mean, we basically had 30, we had 32 board meetings last year. Most of those meetings were around, you know, what, what changes can we make? How do we free up resources? What do we need to do to provide resources and support for our districts? But that, that on-the-ground decision-making in terms of what protocols we're going to place, I don't see any other choice than that being a local, local decision.
One of the things in play there is, is the COVID sick leave policies. And like everything else, as we mentioned, they, they vary from district to district. But it seems, it seems like, and it's been a hot button issue among our members, certainly, because it seems like we're asking these dedicated educators to go back into classrooms that may or may not be safe. And they understand, they understand and appreciate the in-person instruction and the value of that. But then they're rewarded, in quotes, by being forced to take their own personal sick leave to be able to recover from COVID or to quarantine because of a positive test.
Yeah, I think that's a fair concern and the variability around that, I think, is problematic, those types of things. And I think that's something the state board should look at. Sitting, you know, sitting here and talking today, I don't know what level of authority we have around that. I mean, whether that's a statute, a tutorial issue or not, I just don't know. But, yeah, that inconsistency is problematic. You know, there are other common problems that I'm sure you're hearing from, remembering the lack of substitutes. You know, many of our schools, schools are closing, so some schools are closing because the infection rates are too high. But many schools are closing because they just can't get the staff to keep operations going, whether it's a shortage of substitutes or it's a shortage of bus drivers. And so that, that's an issue where I think the state and the state board needs to, needs to help. The whole issue of how schools are funded, you know, the fact that school districts are funded based on average daily attendance. And, you know, how do you, how do we think about that in a world where, you know, we have so much absenteeism here this fall because of COVID-related issues? So those are all areas where, you know, I think your challenge is right. And those are the areas where I think the school board will be discussing issues. And then just, you know, how do we, where are the resources? How can we get more resources? And where can we create flexibility for districts to make it easier for them to get through this, this period of time?
Well, that's a perfect segue, and you must have read my mind, because that's exactly where I was going next, was education personnel. And it's been, it's been a problem ongoing even before COVID, but now it's really been exacerbated and certainly brought to the forefront here. Teachers, support staff, substitutes, all of the various people that make up the, the school experience that helps, that helps our children. And so we've got all these shortages at a time where we've got an influx of federal funds. We've got our state sitting on a record budget surplus. So I guess my question for you as the follow-up to that would be, how can we use those resources to fix this, this pressing problem?
Yeah, I mean, we're, everything you said is true about the state of, the state of play as it relates to, you know, we're very concerned about teacher retention, we're concerned about the number of substitutes out there. We're concerned about, you know, how do we retain and attract people into this profession? And clearly, you know, compensation is part of that. And, you know, I think with the governor's support and the legislative support, we've made significant strides in the career ladder over the last number of years. But, look, we're going to have to, the world isn't standing, you know, we played a little catch-up there, but the world isn't standing still. You know, I come from the business world, every business that I know of has had to make significant changes in compensation, just given the competitive nature of the workforce environment out there. So I think we'd be naive to think that we're not going to have to continue to take a hard look at how we compensate our educators to attract and retain the quality people that we want in our classrooms. But to your point, that extends beyond just the teacher in the classroom to other key components of the operations, whether it's your, you know, bus drivers or paras or, or anybody that's in a school system supporting kids. So, you know, look, I think competition's a key part of that, but it's not all of it. You know, all of our educate, the entire education system has been under attack unfairly during this COVID period. I mean, you know, the attacks on our school boards, on our superintendents, you'll get the turnover we've had in our school leadership just because of the attacks on the system. In many, in many ways, because the decisions are being made are just trying to preserve the health and safety of kids and faculty. I mean, these decisions are the most, of the most noble kind, which is how do we preserve the health and safety of our communities? And somewhat, for whatever reason, our leaders that are making them are being vilified in many communities. And, and that, that is not helping in terms of attracting and retaining great educators in the system. So these are all things that we're concerned about. We just got to get through this, you know, this pandemic crisis response and get back to the day-to-day blocking and tackling of educating kids. And it seems like it's been far too long before, since we've had been having those conversations.
Among those, I hesitate to call them ancillary, call it an ancillary issue, but we'll go there for now because resources and funding tend to be at the top of the, top of that ladder. But you've got less than competitive pay, health risks, large class sizes. But Idaho educators have also had their integrity questioned over these claims of indoctrination. Is there any validity to this? And how does the state board propose to protect the academic freedom of professional educators?
Well, you know, freedom of speech and academic freedom is sort of the core of certainly what I believe in. And I can't speak for my other board members, but I believe they do as well. I mean, it's sort of the core of what's made the American education system great. It's been, I've said this publicly, the whole indoctrination discussion that started in the legislature and continued through the summer with the Lieutenant Governor's Task Force has been so disconcerting to me and it's just so distracting. We, we should be focused on the impact of this pandemic. And, and again, we're in our third year of impact. There has been a huge amount of interrupted or unfinished learning with every kid in Idaho. And we, that's what we should be laser focused on. Never mind the fact that we're, we're still having to focus on how do we keep, preserve the health and safety of our kids right now. And so the fact that we're even talking about this idea that we're indoctrinating our kids, to me, is just a unnecessary distraction without merit. I mean, I'll ask you the question. I mean, I, but I watched the Lieutenant Governor's Task Force all summer. I saw precious little evidence that there was systematic or systemic indoctrination going on in our system. I know, I certainly know that the state board has no interest in that. And I did, I have a huge amount of confidence in our local school boards that if those, if there was anything that was causing concern that would dealt with at this level. I mean, what, and again, they worked on it for four months. I did not see much evidence. And look, we have 300,000 kids, tens of thousands of educators. There are going to be times where an educator teaches a lesson and the parent doesn't like the approach. That is, but in most cases, it's a conversation with the teacher and the, and the parent, and they work it out. And in those rare, rare cases where it isn't worked out at that level, it might go to the principal. But I'd love to go, and I'd have enough time to do this, I don't think anybody does, go look how many, on how many school board meetings this issue has come up. I would guess it's, in the last year, it's less than one hand where these issues have come up on a, at a school board meeting. So I, I just think it's a, I have huge confidence in our teachers, they're professional educators, they know where the line is. We have great, great principals, superintendent, we have a whole system that's set up to deal with these issues. I think it's a waste of time to be talking about them at the state level, is my first move.
Yeah, and I have a little more leeway to editorialize than you. And that would be along those same lines, though, by and large, it's political grandstanding and nothing has been, been validated. And like you, I think it's a major distraction. Let me touch on one other kind of issue that has been brought to the forefront even more. It was there, it was percolating before COVID, but that's mental health, the mental health of our students and our staff. You know, we've got, it's been ratcheted up because of COVID. And that unfortunately coincides with a time where we're, we're woefully short on both personnel to address it and maybe the, even the empathy that would, that would go hand in hand with recognizing those mental health challenges. Any ideas on how we can best address that problem?
Well, I think, I think there's no question that it's an issue we're going to have to wrestle with. The legislature allocated a small amount of money with the support of Superintendent Navarre, who was focused on this during the last legislative session. I don't think there are enough resources there to get at this issue. To be honest with you, I, I don't know the, I know there's going to be an issue. You can't, you can't go through a global pandemic for the amount of time we have with the amount of isolation we've had without having, I think, lasting impacts on the social emotional well-being of all people. But, but certainly teachers and, and students and, but really anybody. I mean, if you're a school board member and you're getting chased to your car by an angry mob, you know, I mean, the amount of, the amount of contention and, and the intensity of the discourse, I just think is going to create a lot, a lot of lasting impacts that we're going to have to heal from. And it's going to take time and it's going to take resources. And to the point you made earlier, look, we're, I think the governor has done a wonderful job of sort of navigating this pandemic in a way that hasn't undermined our economy. And so we're blessed to have, as you said, a surplus, I mean, significant resources that we can allocate to a lot of the issues that you've raised here. You know, the question of how we do it and how much goes where, I think that's one for the legislature. But clearly, I think social emotional learning and mental health are going to have to be part of the equation.
All right, some very thought-provoking answers there. And a quick pivot, because I did promise we would get to know Kurt Leibich a little bit better. What's your background and why were you compelled to get involved in public education?
You know, I've always been involved in education at different, you know, I have a business guy by, by background. I, I came to Idaho 27 years ago to work for a forest products company. And I've basically been in the forest products industry my whole career. So I come in from a business background. My, my first interest in education was really around trying to make sure that the, my businesses and more broadly, the US economy had the workforce they would need to be competitive long-term. So I gotten, I've been involved with an organization called Productively the Way, which is the nation's largest STEM curricular organization, we're not-for-profit, but we put basically STEM curricular into CTE programs across the country. Been involved with that for a long time. Early on, when I was in Boise, I got involved with the Lee Pesky Learning Center, which works with various learning differences. So I've been involved with that. I was on a board of a private school in town for 10 years. And then really where I got started getting involved with Idaho Public Education, when it was Governor Otter convened a task force to look at higher education. It was led by Dr. Clark and Bob Locke, and Governor Otter asked me to serve on that. And then when Governor Little came into office, he convened a similar task force around K-12 education that was led by, at the time, President Critchfield, who was the president of the state board, and Bill Gilbert, who's a new state board member. And Brad, Governor Little, asked me to serve on that. So I served on both of those task forces, got a real strong sense of sort of what those recommendations were, why, why they were made. And so I think, you know, based on all the work I had done there, I think the governor felt like I had the background to, to step on the state board. But, but, you know, again, the reason I, I did it is because I firmly believe that particularly our Idaho economy is going to be so dependent on the quality of the workforce that our education system develops that it's, it's, and more and more, and I've said this before, more and more, I'm convinced that our democracy is contingent on how well we do in educating our kids. And so for those reasons, I, you know, decided to serve.
A kind of last thought here, as you've noted a couple of times, politics play a role in this, whether we, whether we like it or not. So what changes would you personally propose perhaps that would be realistic, given the political constraints or environment? And if politics weren't such a major player in the education decisions, what, how would you approach it differently? What would you, what would you propose then?
Well, let's start with, let's, I always start with sort of what I think our key priorities need to be. So I can either start at the end of this, with the pipeline, and I'll go back to the beginning. We need more kids to go on to post-secondary education out of high school. Doesn't mean they have to go to a four-year school, a school, but we need more kids going on to a four-year, two-year, more kids going on apprenticeships. Kids, students need more than a high school education to succeed in today's workforce. So anything we can do, whether it's increasing opportunity scholarships to support access and afford, because we know one of the big areas is affordability. So anything we can do to provide scholarships to students, counseling to high school students so they understand these different pathways, I think is really, really important. If you, if you look at the K-12 system, it all starts with literacy. If we don't, if kids aren't able to read at grade level, in the third grade, we fight it through the entire system. So it's why when the governor, you know, the governor came in, I think he was right on to say, my number one priority is literacy. So K-3 literacy is critical to us. I think the biggest thing we could do there is to work on school readiness, which includes a full-day kindergarten option for, for kids who will need that little extra boost to be ready to go in first grade. I think there's too much of a differential in terms of the kids that enter the pipeline, and we're not able to close that gap fast enough. So I'd be investing in, in school readiness in various shapes and sizes, but including full K, optional full K. And then we need to be laser focused on where we think the most, the biggest impact has been from the pandemic. So one area is literacy, so we already touched on that. The next area we're really focused on at the state board is, is, is middle school, four through nine mathematics, because the national data is saying that there's been some, this pandemic has caused significant disruption in middle school math. So you got to get kids, kids ready to read by third grade, they've got to develop those math competencies which are stackable in middle school. Because again, if you don't have that, there's no way. If you don't have good middle school math background, you're going to get destroyed in Algebra I and just the most basic high school math. And then thinking the high school, it's all about credit recovery. Way too many students suffered during this pandemic, weren't able to focus, didn't get the support they needed. So the, the number of Ds and Fs that we experienced throughout the secondary level is problematic. So those are, those are the three sort of areas I would be laser focused on from a sort of a policy, a policy standpoint. Does that answer your question?
Largely, there are some very strong pillars there. I guess I would throw in, considering the source and on behalf of educators and IEA members around the state, I think that educator retention, both short-term, as we worked through the pandemic, and longer-term would, would be a very high priority as well.
Yeah, and I, so I was talking, yeah, and I was probably neglectful of not speaking to that. I mean, that's the, education happens between a great teacher and a, and a student in the classroom. There are, there are some students, there's a small percentage that can learn virtually. But for the vast majority of students, I think once, I think this pandemic has showed us that the best education happens in a classroom between a caring, competent teacher and an engaged student. And so when I was talking about the priorities, I was really speaking to it from a student achievement standpoint. But there's no question, the foundation of it all is the educator. So, you know, if we're not able to attract and retain great educators, none of the student achievement goals that I talked about are going to happen. So the state board is keenly aware of that and is going to be focused on those issues as well.
Well, I would have been rebased if I didn't bring it back around to that. Kurt, obviously, there's a lot of work ahead of all of us and no easy answers. But appreciate your sharing some of your, your thoughts and insight and expertise and appreciate your time today.
Yeah, and I, look, I would just like to thank all the educators out there. It's, I can't, the amount of stress you all have been under, and it's, it's been, you know, it's evolved, right? I mean, you know, I mean, you know, you think about where we, where we started, I've gone through this timeline, but March of 2020, when schools just went virtual, within like a week, you all had to figure out how to move your, your lesson plans online. Like you were never, no one ever prepared you to do that. No one ever thought that would ever, but within a week you had to do that. And then, then you come back and so many of you, um, in 2021 had to, um, not only deliver your, your, uh, uh, lessons in person, but so many times when we were trying to reduce density, you also had students working virtually. So you had a, you were almost having to do double duty in terms of figuring out how to do your lesson plan in person. And, and then, and then through it all, you had to figure out how to make these connections with kids. Cause you all recognize that kids don't learn unless they have that individual connection with you all. And, and so the extra energy that's required to do that when you're online is, is, uh, is just more and more work. And then, you know, coming into this year with the, this, the Delta variant and, you know, all the concerns around health and safety, I mean, you've all had, you've had to weather all that. So I just want you to know the state board, uh, admires all of our educators and the sacrifices they've made to, uh, to keep our, to do the best we can at getting kids in school. And I think if you look across the fabric of this country, Idaho stands out as a state that I think, you know, when you look on balance, has done better than most in terms of, uh, keeping kids in school and keeping them engaged. So that's a credit, that's a credit to every educator in the state. And I just want you to know the state board, uh, and I certainly appreciate it. So I just want to make that, that final comment.
Okay. And we appreciate those comments and that sentiment. And again, thanks for your time today. Appreciate it very much.
Yep. Thank you.